Trevor, I can't get in on video, so I'm here. I got out and I restarted and I just can't get in.
Yeah.
Hey, I just started a meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Can you hear you, Jolie? Perfect. Yes, Anita?
Do you hear any background noise from me? The people across the street had their trees pruned all day and they've just started the grinder.
No, I'm not hearing it.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't disruptive to the group.
Trevor, are you still trying to help Lynette?
Yeah, it still won't let me start, but I'm willing to start if you are.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this is Angel. I sent request for Councilmember Liang to start video, like on my end, asked to start. And I see it flicker, but then it just goes back to her screen name. So I'm not sure what's really going on here.
Are you getting that message, Lynette?
Yes, and I'm clicking on it and it just keeps telling me cannot start video.
Interesting. So if you are okay, I will get us started only because we have a very tight schedule between now and seven.
Yes, and I know.
And in the meantime, if Trevor and/or Angel could continue working on it, that'd be great.
Yeah, because I logged off and logged back on and it still didn't allow me to, so I don't know if you want me to try one more time or...
Do you want to try one more time, Lynette?
You want me to try one more time? I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Check on my video real quick.
Your video is working, Trevor.
Good, 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 good.
It is? I don't see him.
We saw the laid-back attitude, just briefly.
I was trying to get out of it.
For a second, Anita.
Didn't lean back.
I'm on. It still won't let me.
Okay, so we'll get started and hopefully it will fix itself before council meeting at seven.
Okay.
All right, Angel, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, so I will go ahead. Is it recording perfect? I will go ahead and call the La Salto City Council Study Session of Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, to order at 4:03 PM. Angel, can you please call, roll, and establish that we have quorum?
I'd be happy to. If you are present, please say "I am present." Councilmember Meadows.
Present.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Present.
Councilmember Liang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Enander.
Present.
Mayor Flegor.
Here.
Everyone is here, Mayor.
Thank you, Angel, and I just want to say for the public listening in, Councilmember Liang unfortunately is having problems with her video. That's why she doesn't have it on. We're working on this and so hopefully she'll be able to turn it on at some point during our meetings this evening. Next, we will move to public comment on the agenda item because this is a study session on our norms and procedures. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on the norms. And so let's go to the attendee list. Angel, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on the study session item?
Yes, I'd see three at the moment.
Okay. Again, this is the public's opportunity to comment on the norms and procedures. We will not have any other period during this meeting for the comment from public. Okay, all right, with four hands raised, let's give five hands. Let's give each speaker three, up to three minutes, Angel.
Okay, and our first speaker is Renee Rashid. Are you there, Renee?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, this is Renee Rashid. I'm happy to see a review of the council norms and procedures. And I wanted to voice my support for the following points that have been included. The inclusion of anti-bias training for council members and commissioners. I think it would additionally be helpful for all city staff. I also feel that there should also be a separate document addressing consequences for violations of norms and procedures. So I believe a document for censure and admonishment would be appropriate. Perhaps that's not a part of this discussion, but or perhaps it would be included in this. That's up to you. But I do think something needs to be done to address consequences for violations. And then lastly, the use of electronic devices during council meetings. I feel that this point can be strengthened a bit. I looked at a few other cities that have restrictions on the use of electronic communications. And I sent that in an email. I don't know if it was received in time to be distributed for today. But essentially, there's an example from Petaluma, the city of Petaluma, which describes restrictions on the use of any electronic communications during a meeting. And the city of Stockton as well has described prohibited prohibited the use of electronic communications during city council meetings as well. So I believe the wordings on those two examples are much stronger and should be used in our case. And of course, you could still have the exception for family emergencies. But it might be useful to have the family emergency go through the city attorney or city manager and then notify the council member to then look at their phone or contact their family member. But I am in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Okay, our next speaker is Pete Bailey. Pete, can you, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I just want to express my support for the norm where council members and commissioners should not be using electronic devices during meetings. I think the language could probably be more more forceful. I know from my own experience that it's an issue. I tend to get messages, by the way, I'm the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. I get messages from the public sometimes by text or email during meetings. I never respond. I don't read them during meetings. And I do respond after the meeting with an explanation that, hey, I can't I can't communicate like this during a meeting because it's unfair to the rest of the public that doesn't have access to those messages. And moreover, I feel like we have historically seen council members and commissioners have these kinds of communications during meetings. And I don't feel comfortable that the public has had an opportunity to see the content of those messages. So I just want to, I just want to add my support for that. Thank you.
And Pete, because you mentioned you're chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, could you just state for the record that you were speaking in your personal capacity and not in your capacity as chair?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Flegor. I am speaking in my capacity as an individual resident.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Roberta. Roberta, can you hear us?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, well, I have two items. One of them that I want to talk about is the commissions. And, you know, over the last couple of years, oftentimes perception is reality. And I think that we really do need objective standards for number one of how we choose commissioners in the first place, what the qualifications are, et cetera. And number two, when a council, a commissioner is removed, I think there should be objective standards. Because the perception right now is that, and perception is reality. Unfortunately, you know, we could all have our best intents. But unless we have objective standards, then it appears that it could be a political favor. It could be someone who supported you during the campaign. It could be somebody who agrees with you politically on one issue. And we don't have a balance on the commission. So I would urge you to look at that. If we can have objective standards for housing, we could certainly have it for our commissions. So that's issue number one. And the second thing on electronic devices, I know that we've had to move to that because of COVID. But I do think that it's important that the council members are often in meetings for six, eight hours, that they be allowed to receive calls from children or parents or relatives. In the case of an emergency, I don't think that they'd want to go through another third party. I think that we need to trust that if there are expectant conversations, that it will be reported and recorded. I mean, I would ask that the public not text or chat with council members during a meeting. You know, there should be transparency. On the other hand, I don't think we need to over-regulate the behavior. I think that we need to respect the council members and their ability because they could certainly, you know, have exit conversations all the time with a lot of people. And we expect them to come forward and state that, and I trust that they do. So those are my two points. I hope that you will look at the commissions because we have had incidents more than four that I can think of of different reasons why people were put on or removed from commissions. And it doesn't, I know it's at will right now and just doesn't see, it seems to be too loosey-goosey. Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
Our next speaker is Joe. Joe, can you, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Joe Beninato. Thank you for taking my comments. I submitted a pretty lengthy email about a week ago. And hopefully all of you received that and were able to take a look. So I won't spend too much time here, but I do think, you know, I don't want to get into a he said, she said, or anything else. But it's very clear that communications are happening during meetings. We have, we had a long, difficult period for the city because of this very fact. And I, look, I have sympathy for emergencies with children or other people. But the system is currently being abused and I think the council needs to act in order to stop that. I detailed some of that in the email that I sent to you. With regards to the multiple comments that have come in, both during public comment now as well as from some of the council members, that members of the public should not text council members during meetings. You guys are in meetings all the time. I'm sure most of you are aware of that. And so placing the burden on the public to know, oh, council member so-and-so happens to be in a Parks and Rec meeting right now. Not all of us attend every meeting on the agenda for the city and every commission and every, you know, budget meeting and everything else. Some of us do other things. And so I think the burden needs to be on the council members to not receive communications during these meetings. And it's very clear, I have hours of video evidence showing otherwise that may or may not be used at some point. And we have at least two documented cases from recent public records requests. The whole Kenan incident is one of those. And there's another one more recently in May where the record is clear. The text messages are being sent and received during a meeting. That should not be tolerated. I wish we could trust that everyone will follow the rules, but history has shown that's not the case. So I, as difficult as it might be, I think you need to ban them. And I think you need to have consequences, not only for electronic device usage, but also for other violations of council norms. We just had a recent situation where you guys couldn't remove a young person from the teen committee and, you know, because they weren't showing up. That's a very minor case. You know, there are more difficult cases like the Tesla, you know, driving down the 101 in the middle of the night, or perhaps a felony or something else. So I think you need to have some ability in certain circumstances to do something about violations of norm. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
Our next speaker is Janine Valadez. Janine, are you there?
I am here. I'm assuming you all can hear me. Thank you for the right and the ability to speak. I too want to support the passage of the edits to the norms and procedures with the exception of section 6.8. I believe it is far too soft. In the public comment written submissions, I have proposed a very explicit methodology that the council can use. I do not believe it is onerous for those of us in the professional world and in the volunteer world. And anytime you're in positions of leadership, for example, boards, boards of trustees or executive boards, very often you are caught in six to eight to 10-hour meetings, all-day meetings, and sometimes even an entire multi-day process. And you are disconnect from the internet for privacy and trust issues. So it is not unusual for, you know, a once-a-month meeting or once-every-two-weeks meeting to have to go through this process. We can establish proxies that can interrupt the meeting for any emergency, personal or professional or national. And there are ways to get around this and to do it. So I think that we need to show that our norms and procedures reflect an ideology and an ethic in all of our leaders, not just the city council, but our commissioners and other public appointees, that, oh, and even, and even Brown acted panelists, that we go beyond the basic rules, that we are holding ourselves to the absolute highest standards as reflected in our norms, procedures, policies, and in our training. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Janine.
Our next speaker is Toni Moose. Toni, are you there?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. It's been a long time since I've been here speaking. And I'm very happy that that is indeed the case. I just wanted to call in to reiterate what some of the other speakers have said, but especially in terms of having an ability to censure and admonish councilmembers who break the norms and procedures. I believe that Ms. Valadez in the past has submitted a document and I, about other examples of, you know, ways to censure and admonish council members. And so I'd like you to take another look at that. But what I wanted to say is I think there's a way to include that or reference it in the norms and procedures as they stand and have it maybe as a separate document so that there are standards in place. The other thing I wanted to address quickly is this matter of public outreach to council members potentially during meetings. And I just really think it's incumbent on the council members themselves not to check their messages, not on the public, whether or not they should, they should not have any constraints in when they reach out to their elected officials. They do not have to keep track of the schedules, meetings, and so on of elected officials in order to make sure they're not texting during a meeting. So it's incumbent on the council member to take that responsibility. And nowhere does it say that the public cannot reach out to elected officials. In terms of anti-bias training, I just want to be sure that there's extensive research and input as to which is pursued. And I want to make sure that it's not a one-and-done situation. This is something that needs to be extensive and ongoing and should include all staff, council members, as well as other city officials. And in addition to that, I know this isn't part of the norms and procedures, but it would be useful to offer diversity and inclusion training to all residents of La Salto on an ongoing, or at least a periodic basis, so that everyone gets the opportunity to learn and grow and to do better. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Toni.
I believe we're on our last speaker. Last speaker, Freddie. Freddie, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to speak to the point of the, your, so the council's cell phones being on during a meeting. In the past, we had a council member, Ginny Bruins, who often had her cellphone on during council meetings. And the reason was because her mother was ill. She was the caregiver for her mother and she needed and wanted to be in immediate communication should there be any issue with her mom. Absolutely no one took issue with that. Absolutely no one. People showed compassion. They showed empathy. And nothing was ever said about Ms. Bruins' use of her cellphone. She even left the meeting, took calls, left the meeting on occasion because of her mother's health issues. The reason this is being brought up is because of the Kenan Moose-Lynette Liang dispute. Councilmember Liang had her phone on in order to get news of a terminal relative in Hawaii that she was awaiting news of. The fact that she received text messages is also ironic that Mrs. Moose would call in and speak about that residents shouldn't have any restrictions because Kenan called specifically, knowing that Councilmember Liang was on, was discussing issues that he wanted her to vote a specific way about. And he was texting her to tell her how unhappy he was with her vote. So I just want to point out the double standard that is going on right now. That council, it was completely okay for Councilmember Bruins to have her phone on to speak with her relatives. Yeah, and yet now there is this outrage that Councilmember Liang, who was in the same position and who happened to look at these texts because she was expecting incoming information about her relative. That's now just, you know, completely unacceptable. I would just ask that this double standard be recognized. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Freddie.
I believe we have no more speakers. Mayor?
Thank you so much, Angel. So we'll continue again. This is a study session, and there's just one discussion item, and it's the council norms and procedures. And this is a continuation from the study session we held on May 11. And, and Jolie and I will be managing this agenda item along with Trevor, very similar to what we did the last time. And we got up to the end of section nine. And so the plan for this evening is to pick up where we left off at section 10, finish the set of norms, and then go back to sections one through nine to confirm that the edits Jolie and I made reflect the discussion and consensus points that we heard on May 11. The third part of this discussion, and it will depend on how much time we have, is to discuss whether or not there are additional sections that we would like to add to the norms that do not exist today. If there's a request for such a section, and it requires, for example, our city attorney to go back and draft that, that's something that as council, we would discuss and direct, time permitting. So the first thing again we will do is pick up on section 10. We should all have the red line documents that we did in preparation for that May 11 meeting. And so we're going to do it very similar to the last time. Trevor will be taking notes off screen. And I can tell you, he did a really good job the last time because when we looked at his notes, they really reflected what was discussed. So thanks, Trevor, and thanks for doing it again. So we're going to share the screen, starting with section 10. And I'm going to go through each section. If a council member wants to propose a change, we will do that, we'll discuss it, and then we'll move on. Again, not because a council member included red lines in the written submission, we will necessarily discuss it here. If a council member still wants to raise it as a proposed change, then they would need to do it in the meeting. So Trevor will be pulling it up, and we're going to start on section 10, which is agenda contents.
Mayor, this is, this is John, and I'm actually going to share my screen.
Oh, okay. Thanks, John. Okay, so let's start with 10.1. And by a show of hands, and let me pull up my panelist list. By a show of hands, any discussion on 10.1? So you know, hands raised. 10.2?
Can I ask my usual, which is to please make this bigger on the screen?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Meadows, for that reminder, and I should get my reading glasses as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows.
Mayor, I was slow on getting my hand up on 10.1.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember.
I was just going to say, I had some notes from, I saw that Jonathan had some comments on this section.
Right, but remember, Ms. Houston, unless he brings it up again in the meeting, we're just going to keep going.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Weinberg.
I propose that we amend section 10.1 to read that the city council as a whole is responsible for running a timely and orderly meeting, and the mayor shall have the honor of conducting the meeting. And I would also like to, to add a sentence at the end stating that the mayor has the prerogative of casting the last vote on any motion.
So I love the fact that you're saying the mayor has the honor.
Thought you were.
So I, I, I am fine with that change because I do think the responsibility of making sure the meeting moves orderly is on all of us. You know, watching how long we talk and helping to really manage everything. So I am comfortable with that change. The second point, Councilmember Weinberg, about the mayor reserving the right or having the prerogative to cast the last vote, that is standard. That's actually standard that I've seen in my decades of being involved with the public sector, where I can reserve the right to always vote last. I don't know if it needs to be documented here, Jolie, or if it's somewhere. I don't know where the source resides, but I know this is standard. So as Jolie's thinking about that, any comments, questions on Councilmember Weinberg's proposals? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I, I understand the concept that the council member is saying, which is that the entire council should be responsible for making sure we have a timely and orderly meeting. But in terms of running the meeting, if you don't have someone running the meeting, you all run off the edge of a cliff, in my experience. So I would not favor the, the change as he stated to make a generalized comment elsewhere that it is a responsibility of all members of the council to make sure that we're comporting ourselves in a way that, that the meeting can proceed in a timely and orderly fashion. I would support that concept, but I think that as to the mayor's responsibility, it should remain as stated, that it is ultimately the mayor's responsibility to keep everything on track.
And I would agree with that, and I can't raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thanks for letting me know, Councilmember Liang. Councilmember Meadows, any comments on this?
I agree that the mayor is running the meeting, but I certainly agree that it's the responsibility of each council member to do their part. And I think this is probably the best place to include that, so I would support that. And Mr. Maginot, this doesn't look any bigger to me. There is a plus sign that you might be able to utilize to raise the size. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Maginot. Okay, so again, Trevor's taking notes in the background, and I think we all have those notes. And Ms. Houston, let us know if we need to specify in our norms.
Well, I was just double checking with our Rosenberg rules. And it's interesting. It, it says what the chair should do, however, is strive to be the last to speak at the discussion and debate stage. And it, this is contrary to our norms. It says the chair should not make or second a motion unless the chair is convinced that no other member of the body will do so at that point of time, so.
Well, I actually try to do that. I do. I hold back until, unless I see there's a need.
Yeah, so if, if you want to put it in there that it's your prerogative, you can. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt. But I was just double checking that we weren't doing something contrary to Rosenberg's.
Got it. Thanks, Ms. Houston. Okay, so I'll keep going. 10.2?
I'm unclear, excuse me, I'm unclear as to what we're moving forward on or not on this item and how the language will read. So please clarify.
So I will clarify, Councilmember Liang, and I will also say this for the benefit of the public as well. This is a study session. We're not making final decisions. The plan is after we do this discussion and redlining of the norms and procedures, the final proposed revised document will be agendized for a regular city council meeting for us to review a final time and vote. But Councilmember Liang, the change will say essentially the mayor is responsible for running a timely meeting, but then we will reword it so that it's the entire city council that has the responsibility to ensure that the meeting is run in an orderly fashion and to comport ourselves accordingly. We will also add a sentence that makes clear that the mayor has the prerogative or can always reserve the right to be the last one to vote on an item.
I think that was understood, and, but if you need to put it in language, I understand.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, 10.2? Virtual hands and Councilmember Liang, I will listen.
I have a question. So before, we would write these things in red while we're talking about it so we know what changes were being added. Are we not doing that this time?
No, and we actually didn't do that the last time either. Trevor in the background is taking notes. And then he will compile the notes for the subsequent city council meeting that gets scheduled.
Okay, I thought I saw some sort of notes the last time we did it, so I'm just a little making sure.
All right, 10.2, 10.3?
10.2, I did have a point to make, and I did request that the agenda should provide pros and cons of issues. And I think in the previous councils years past, it was much clearer on how the positions were presented. So I'd like to have some language that we go back to that model, and that would be great. Jolie, if you can recall, you were part of councils back then and how we were able to present that. If you could share some input on that.
Ms. Houston?
I'm trying to think of which city manager it was their form of their staff report. I think it might, I was going to say, I think it might have been Doug. But that's, and some, some council agendas have pros and cons, or they have options, and you are, like, we have options. And then sort of what's the impact of the options? So it would be up to council if they want to change how the agenda's drafted like that, so. Or the staff reports.
Any thoughts on that? Let me see if other council members have their thoughts on this proposal.
It provided consistency on how agendas were presented, and it was clear, made much clearer to the public, just to let you know.
Okay, councilmembers, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Meadows, Councilmember Weinberg, any thoughts?
Looks like Mr. Kildare wants to say some.
I'm having trouble raising my hand, sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
On this one, if you do feel that there needs to be some adjustments to the staff reports, I'm not trying to delay it. I, before putting something into the norms, I would actually recommend the council have a session to discuss it and go through examples to make sure, because I don't think you want staff. I mean, I understand wanting more, I didn't want to say options, pros and cons. But there's many ways you can write these, and I think it'd be good for the council to actually go through some samples and some examples and really nail it down so staff isn't second guessing.
Yeah, and, and 10.2 is just the description of the agenda matters. It isn't really the staff reports. So we would have to have something that addresses staff reports.
And, and just to piggyback on what Mr. Kildare and Ms. Houston have said, I don't think this belongs in the norms. I really don't. Because it really depends on what the staff report relates to. Some things lend themselves to pros and cons formats, some do not. And so I wouldn't want us to be this prescriptive in our norms and procedures about what a staff report should look like. I think we have a new city manager starting, and I'm sure we all have our one and ones with him. I think this may be something we can communicate to him about different things that we would like, you know, reflected in the staff reports to help us make better decisions. But I do not believe this is something that should be in a norms and procedures document.
Well, I just want to comment on that because it says agenda content. So if it's the content supporting the agenda item, that's the reason why.
Okay, so Councilmember Weinberg, I see you have your hand raised.
But very quickly, my concern is that we're asking staff at times to then make a value judgment, and I don't think that's fair.
I agree. Sometimes it's not, it's, it just doesn't lend itself to that. So can we do a quick consensus check? Those who are in favor of adding specific language to 10.2 that requires staff to include a pros and cons or advantages, disadvantages section?
Mayor, why are we voting on this and we didn't vote inclinations on the last one? Just curious.
No, 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 we're doing a consensus check. This is what we did the last time for the studies.
You didn't do it on the last item. You never expressed an opinion. I don't, well, anyway.
Vice Mayor, because there wasn't, everybody spoke to 10.1, and it was clear that everybody agreed with those changes.
Well, what you said didn't end up sounding like what I thought I heard from Councilmember Weinberg at the beginning. So I was massively confused but willing to let it go until we have it coming back. So, because I, I thought I distinctly heard him say that taking that first sentence out, and you sounded like you wanted to leave that first sentence in. So I'm willing to let it go and let everything come back. My own opinion on this one is this needs to be discussed with the new city manager.
That was my point as well. And on, and as we go through the different sections, and I'm going to use 10.1 as, as an example, where Councilmember Weinberg proposed the change, and then the other four of us went a different direction. I will leave it to Councilmember Weinberg or whoever in council wants to say, wait a minute, I still like or still propose my way. So that's, that's what we have done. Let's continue with that format. But Vice Mayor, you basically echoed what I said. I do think this should rest with our new city manager. And so unless I see hands raised on 10.2, we're going to leave it as is and flag that this is something we want to raise with our new city manager. Okay, 10.3? I'm looking for virtual hands except for Councilmember Liang. Okay, 10.4? 10.5? I'll put, Councilmember Weinberg?
I think 10.5 should be deleted.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Okay, we have three council members wanting to completely delete section 10.5.
I agree, because we don't do that anyway.
Okay, so Trevor, we're taking out 10.5. I think there's consensus there. 10.6?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Liang.
10.6, you have in parentheses, limited to one minute per council member. I think that parentheses statement should be eliminated.
Okay.
Because, you know.
We don't. Exactly. No, we, I agree. It's aspirational. I agree, and also for, are you suggesting, Councilmember Liang, for both the reports and the future agenda items, those parentheticals, any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll keep going. 10.7?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I'll just point out that I think this is a little bit ambiguous because it says at the beginning of a council meeting. Well, it's not really at the beginning of a council meeting. Changes to order of the agenda follow establishing quorum, the pledge, announcements. So I'm not sure it should say, at the beginning, maybe it should say, as prescribed in the order of the agenda above, the mayor may request blah, blah, or something like that.
I, I agree, because it's not at the beginning. So we're fixing it to reality. Any objections, concerns with that change? Looking for virtual hands? Seeing none. 10.8?
One edit to 10.8, please. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, 10.9.
So no changes to 10.8, so we'll move to 10.9. Go ahead, Councilmember Liang.
The tentative council calendar will be posted on the city's website. We should make sure it's posted on the city's website.
Okay, you're adding that, so that requirement. Nope. I have no concerns. Any council members have any objections or concerns?
I, I don't have an objection or concern. I fully support it. But I think it's important to include wording that describes it's tentative. Obviously, the title is tentative, but that it is subject to change at any given moment.
Any concerns or objections with Councilmember Meadows? Any concerns or objections with Councilmember Meadows' suggestion? Just to clarify, we all know what tentative means, but just to make sure it's clear that it could be changed. Okay. Moving right along, and 10.10. Vice Mayor.
I only have a quick question for the city attorney, and that is, what are the dangers or cautions or whatever as to Brown Act issues? And how we get three council members to say they want something on an agenda without being open to some sort of supposition that something untoward has happened?
So, future agenda items, you can, you're, the discussion is, are you in favor of bringing this back or not? You're not supposed to get into the merits of it. And, and since it's not on the agenda, and I just checked this not too long ago, the public doesn't have a right to comment on future agenda items because it's not on the agenda. So the limitation should be, I want to bring back, I'd like to bring the gun ordinance forward. Do I have two people or three people? And then you're not supposed to get into a discussion of the merits. So you just have to be very careful.
And does that mean that the only way that someone other than the mayor can get something onto the agenda is by having said so during an open meeting?
I believe so.
Because that has not always been the practice in the past, and that's what I think we need to clarify is whether items that other members of the council want to have placed on the agenda, if they can only be suggested during a prior meeting, I think that needs to be clarified.
I think there's a, there's something about, no, that's letters, those are like the League of California letters, those can be. But it's up to the council to clarify that, because that was.
Yeah, also I'm saying is, I, I think we've had differing, we've had differing practices in the last five years. And I don't know the, how the best way is to clarify that.
So I can speak to that, Vice Mayor, and we're talking about two different things. So as you know, in order to put something on our agenda that requires staff work, we need three council members. Those types of items cannot be placed on the agenda outside of a public meeting, because that would be a Brown Act violation. For agenda items that only require two council members, meaning no staff work is necessary. I agree with you, I have seen where two council members would reach out to the city manager and ask to place it on the agenda. To me, those are two different things, and the two council members, as you know, placing it on the agenda or asking for it to be placed on the agenda would not be a Brown Act violation. But as Jolie said, as a council, do we want to allow for that? Or do we want to require that even if it's two council members who want an agenda item, that, that must be brought up during a public meeting, future agenda item discussion? So if you want.
That is the question.
Yes, so I've summed up the question, let me, Mr. Kildare, go ahead.
Unsolicited advice. I have done this for a lot of years, and it's very important to make sure you have your rules in place. Otherwise, it becomes, and I mean this respectfully, a free for all relative to putting your agendas together. And I know you all know, understand that. Way I've always seen it, and I won't sit here and say verbatim, but even the mayor, it needs to be remembered, even the mayor is under the same criteria relative to placing items on the agenda. And I think that's a good discussion to have, if, if in the past or whatever, it wasn't clear. Because when we put items forward, and I would, I'm not talking about proclamations or presentations, it's usually much more flexible in that regard. But when it's a business item of the council, I've always stressed that it is something that is, the council as a body has directed staff to bring forward. Now, the timing of those coming forward, and whether it's on the first meeting or the second meeting of the month and that sort of thing, I do discuss that with the mayor quite a bit relative to managing the agenda, but not what. So I'm only throwing that out there that, you know, please have the discussion, but keep in mind that generally, staff does not move an item forward unless it has been directed by your rules.
No, thanks for that, Mr. Kildare, I can start the discussion. I, I think any request to place an item on the agenda should be made during the public meeting, during the future agenda item, regardless if it's two council members or three. I do think there are exceptions to that rule, in addition to what Mr. Kildare said, the normal proclamations. If there's something urgent, and I'll give an example. You know, we were going to get an urgency ordinance on the agenda, and I remember I talked to Councilmember Liang about it over the weekend. And that, there was no time to actually wait until a council meeting to have that discussion to put it on. So I do think there should be exceptions depending on the item and the urgency of that item. But as a general practice, I do think it's better for the public to hear the council members proposing an item for the agenda as opposed to two council members calling the city manager offline and asking that to happen. So that's my inclination, I don't know how others feel.
Mayor.
Councilmember Meadows, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to raise my virtual hand. I, I agree with that, I think it should be, you know, except in the, those urgency cases, it should all be, agenda items should be proposed in the public meeting in the appropriate item and the agenda.
Thanks, and that will avoid putting the city manager in a very awkward position to sometimes make the call about which ones he or she, well, he now, we do have someone, you know, is putting on the agenda.
So I, I, I agree, we should be able to, I'm sorry, I didn't get it, couldn't raise my hand, so if you're ready for me, I could comment.
Go ahead.
There are times where we do need to act expeditiously. The other thing is, I do have a problem when two council members want to put agenda something, and it does not require staff report. It's not for three council members to say, no, we don't want this. If you have two council members that says, I would like to bring this forward for discussion, it should be an opportunity to have that item for discussion. And that's where I see problems when you say, well, we have to do it at an open meeting, because then people shouldn't be weighing in on why I don't want this for discussion when you have two council members who feel it should be a discussion item. That's, that's the issue that I would see. And normally, when two council members bring it to a city manager to agendize, it does go towards the mayor as well as the city manager. The city manager doesn't make the decision himself to say, yes, it goes on the calendar, the next calendar. He does discuss it with the, the mayor and say, these are items that will be coming up. And you, as a mayor, as well with the city manager, have the discretion of which timeline to follow. So just to help clarify things.
The timeline is different, so, but I think we're all, let me make sure, check with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Weinberg, because you raised something different, and I want to see if we're all aligned on the idea that, you know, what for those exceptions for future agenda items, whether it's two council members or three, that should take place during a public meeting. Let me just check with everybody to make, Councilmember Weinberg, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Meadows, I think in the interest of transparency, nothing should be put on the agenda that isn't an urgency unless it has been brought forth in front of the council at a prior council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Houston.
Yeah, I raised my hand. Can, I guess we can work on some sort of definition of urgency. So it would, I mean, to have some sort of examples of what urgency is, because it, there could be urgency because we need to pass something right away, or, but just because someone really, really, really wants it on the agenda, it won't be an urge. So it needs some sort of parameters, so it needs to be defined, just so we don't. One person's urgency could be someone else's non-urgency, so.
I agree.
And maybe the new city manager might have some ideas on this.
No, I agree, has to be objective. Vice Mayor, do you want to weigh in on this change or clarification that any?
No, I think we're headed the right direction, and, and I think the city attorney's got a good point. And mostly, it has to do with, if we, if we haven't, to me, an urgency would be, if we don't have it on the agenda at a given time, to be able to take an action, we then lose the capability of either achieving something or influencing something or participating in something, you know, where there's, there's a time, a timeliness issue that's imposed by some exterior force.
I agree. Mayor and Vice Mayor, I think what we could do is, is look at the language in the Brown Act for adding an urgency item, and it's come up since the agenda's been posted and action needs to be taken before the next meeting or something. We could look at that language that is adding, so it's, we, we don't, I don't think we have to invent the wheel here, I think we can borrow.
Always appreciate that. And, so okay, I have that on the list. And then, just to close the loop on what Councilmember Liang said, which is a separate discussion point, which relates to if two council members propose putting something on the agenda without staff work required, can three council members then vote against having that agenda item be placed on a future agenda? And Ms. Houston, I don't know if you have an answer, if you want to come back to us with an answer on that question. And I really think it depends on what it is, but do you want to come back to us on an answer to that question?
I would, because I don't recall that happening. So let me, let me think about that.
Yeah, Mayor, I have to say, since I've been here, the council has always honored when two council members have asked to place an item on an agenda. So, yeah. And so staff's understanding is, we'll get it on there as soon as we have an opening on the agenda for discussion. And it, and we're not to put any staff work in other than just present a minimum staff report introducing it. And council members on occasion have asked, have provided information that staff attaches to the cover memo, cover staff report.
Right. No, I agree, there's a difference in saying an agenda item and maybe the content or something to that extent. Okay, so 10.11 council questions, any comments, changes to that section? Seeing no hands, moving to section 11, 11.1.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute in time for 10.11.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that our practice, or if we need to clarify the language on 10.11, when it says that staff will provide all questions and answers to council questions to all, I mean, to all council members, and accept attorney-client communications to the public, we have to either put the language that we're consistent, and we'll also be providing the responses onto the website with the agenda items.
So Councilmember Liang, I understand placing it on the website, but what do you mean by consistent?
Because lots of times we're saying, the response needs to be put on the website. Like when we ask our questions to certain agenda items, sometimes it doesn't go on the website, and people would like to know that these questions are being asked. The reason why we ask these questions early on is so that we know that we got the answers from staff, and we don't have to ask the questions at the council meeting. So I just think that, you know, people know that we're, we're doing our due diligence to get the answers that they would, or questions answered that they would have as well.
Good. Any objections, concerns to Councilmember Liang's suggestion to add the word that it should be posted consistently on the, on the city's website? Okay, seeing no hands, section 11.1. Okay, seeing no hands, 11 point, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor, this is where I think there's, there's potential kind of overlap with 10.1 and 11.1, and we might want to kind of reconcile those, because to me, the first sentence that's in 10.1 is really what ought to be the first sentence in 11.1, which is the mayor's responsible for running a timely and orderly meeting, maintaining order and decorum, or something like that. And that's really belongs over in 11.1 on the operate, running of the meeting. The agenda contents, which is 10.1, really, in retrospect, ought to deal with the mayor's responsibility in
organizing.
Preparing the agenda, working with the city manager, and that's not what is on 10.1.
I, I agree 100%, so for 10.1, Trevor and Jolie and I can work on this, because I get what the Vice Mayor is saying. And so I'll repeat it, just to make sure. 10.1, there are sections, which is the mayor's responsibility, that really belongs in 11.1, because section 10 is really about agenda contents, not the mayor's role. So unless there are objections or concerns related to us editing the document so that it splits that, the language, we will do that.
So I, I do think that 10.1 should still reflect that the mayor, and I know we say this elsewhere, and for the life of me, I don't know where, that the mayor with the city manager prepare and order the contents of, of the agenda.
Yeah, so that would obviously, that still applies to that section, so we'll take that. Okay, so still, so anything else, Vice Mayor, on 11.1? So then moving to 11.2. Councilmember Weinberg.
I propose that we change 11.2A to read that a motion is required prior to discussion on an agenda item. Our meetings are running too long. I think the, the city attorney has mentioned that some other jurisdictions to, to shorten their meetings have adopted the tactic of rather than wait for the presentation, staff presentation, then questions to staff, then public comment, then the council discusses, then council forms a motion, then council discusses a motion, that motion again. There's like two rounds of council discussion under that model. If we open up with a motion, that gives us something really concrete to debate early on, and I think will help streamline our meetings.
So I can respond to that, so our practice here in Los Altos is exactly what you said, and Councilmember Weinberg, where we do have the discussion, because some people like to have that discussion before we put a motion on the floor. But the actual language of, or norms, doesn't prevent us from putting, it just says it's not required. And so it's a matter of practice versus what our norms say. We could, we can, if we're just going by norms and not practice, we can do exactly what you're saying. Or practice sedate has been what you're describing, but it's not what the norms require.
But the reality is, and it's not just this council, there are prior councils too, there've been some real unfocused, kind of loosey-goosey discussions. And those are the ones that usually take the most amount of time. I, I think that it would behoove the council, and it would be in the public's interest if we were to amend this to require a motion in order to open up debate. That doesn't mean that that's the final motion, that no one can propose a substitute, or no one can make a friendly amendment, but I think it's going to help focus us a lot.
I'm going to go to Ms. Houston, go ahead, Ms. Houston.
Yeah, I, I think this came up in the, our retreat, but Rosenberg's rules require a motion before discussion. But we have amended, we did an addendum to Rosenberg's rules a while ago, and that says a motion. And that says a motion is not required prior to a general discussion of an item. A pre-motion discussion allows the members to share their thoughts on an agendized item so that the motion. Can more easily be made that takes into account what appears to be the majority position. So. Um, whatever we do on this, we may need to change our 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 addendum to the rule. So I'm going to write a note if we need to do that. Okay?
No, thanks for catching that, because all our documents have to say the same thing. Um, Vice Mayor.
Um, two comments. One is that in the years I've sat in on council meetings, I have seen circumstances where the mayor um. Took a motion before there was much discussion. And sometimes that worked and sometimes it didn't work at all. And in fact, the seemed the council took more time because they discussed the motion until they, to death, until they figured out that they really hated the motion. And they needed a different motion. And in fact, if they had had the discussion on the front end, they might have come to to their consensus on a motion much faster. So I do think we're better served by leaving the flexibility in the language. And allowing the council and the mayor to help move things toward whatever is the more effective. I won't say efficient, because it government isn't by nature sometimes efficient. But um, but I've also seen where that type of discussion has evolved a better solution than would have been reached. Had someone put a motion out there because they thought they could get three votes for it and we moved forward and. It didn't turn out to be as good as it would have been if there'd been more discussion. So I prefer to leave it as is. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll just add to what the Vice Mayor said. So Councilmember Weinberg, I know exactly what you're trying to achieve here. And I agree with your ultimate goal. But I don't think even changing this to say a motion must be put on the floor first. Would necessarily affect the length of the discussion that follows. And I agree with the Vice Mayor. I've actually seen where it takes longer because you've discussed this motion. And then you don't get the support for the motion. And then you have to figure out, okay, what's the new motion to put on the table? So I like the flexibility of a motion is not required. I do think the onus is on all of us, you know, I am mayor this year and future mayors. Um, you know, not to repeat what we're saying, you know, to help all of us move forward and not get stuck. Repeating ourselves, which lengthens the discussion so that we can get to a motion. But but I also want to take this opportunity to encourage council members because we have the practice, as as Ms. Houston said. But if there's really an oper, if there's really a discussion item where a council member believes we should do the motion first. He or she should try it. There's nothing that prohibits it. There's nothing that prohibits it. Okay, any, so we have Councilmember Weinberg, go ahead.
So I I understand what Mayor, what you and the Vice Mayor are saying, and that's fine. I I get the logic. I will say this. I believe that our meetings last too long. And sometimes a long meeting is unavoidable. Sometimes I believe there are things that could be done to shorten them. I would love to see some kind of a concrete suggestion from you or the Vice Mayor to somehow. Truncate our meetings, shorten them up in a meaningful way. These are rules that can be changed if they don't appear to be working. I was offering something that I'm under the impression works in other jurisdictions. And I can see why it wouldn't necessarily work. But it it's it's something out there that changes things structurally, which has the goal of trying to shorten our meetings. Uh, I do not want it to to lead to an inferior solution. But putting a motion out there again does not eliminate anyone else's ability. To have a substitute motion or to make friendly amendments. I mean, putting a motion forward doesn't mean we don't have discussion. It just eliminates one of the rounds of discussion. Um, I think everyone on this council has said our meetings are going too long. I think at our retreat, we joked about it. The reality is that they are going too long. The public is watching it. The public doesn't like them going that long. Let's try to find some concrete structural institutional changes that can actually lead to shorter meetings.
No, thanks for that, Councilmember Weinberg. And I don't know if this is the solution, but what I will say as mayor for the next few months. Um, and we do have a six-week break is, you know, I will help to remind each of you. When you're repeating yourselves or something has already been answered, so I'm not, you know, saying. I will try to be fair across the board in pointing these things out. So I think that is one way and to to accept your challenge. Um, I will continue to look for ways to shorten the discussion. Uh, so that we can move items along. But I do want to also say, because that's what our norms and and the Rosenberg rules allow. If there's a particular discussion item that you think putting a motion on the floor. Would expedite that particular discussion, you can do that. Okay.
I do not, I'm supporting not change, making any changes to this item. And I'm keeping it short and sweet, so I don't have to reiterate what everyone said.
Perfect. What in, yeah, Ja- Jan Pepper's ditto. Um, okay, so I don't see any more hands raised, any objections, concerns with. Keeping it where we're not requiring a motion, but we're also not saying you can't place a motion. Okay.
I had, I have my hand raised, Mayor, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Would support keeping the wording as is, but I think we should try, you know, our norm was. Was to have the discussion first. I think we should consciously try to do this sometimes and and see how it works.
No, I agree. And I will also look for opportunities because I have a sense of some items where you could put the motion on the floor. And just move it. Uh, so let's, let's collectively do this and try it. Um, so thank you for that. All right. Eleven point three, any changes, comments? Ms. Houston? Julie, did?
No, do I? My hand still raised?
Oh, that's from before. Okay.
No, oh, sorry.
No problem. Eleven point four. Any comments, changes? Okay, eleven point five. Okay, seeing no hands, eleven point six. Vice Mayor Ian Under, are you commenting on five or six?
Six.
Six? Okay, I have comments. Go ahead. You can start.
Um, in item C, uh, no. Um, sorry, the end of B, the the end of the second paragraph of B. Um, this is a question for the city attorney. Is there a reason for the final sentence which says seating of time will not be allowed during land use hearings? And I'm not sure if we've always adhered to that or not.
I am, I am not sure why and how this got changed because for years there was no seating of time. And I'm not sure if it happened when I was gone, or maybe it was, um, but um. I don't know the reason why there is seating of, no seating of time during a land use matter. Um.
Because unless there's a statutory prohibition, I don't know why we would do that in the event, for example. That a group of neighbors wanted to cede time for one speaker with respect to a development proposal, for example. And I and I know we've done it, so I know we have, I know we have violated this norm.
Yeah, I just think that what I'm looking at would be if we cede time. The speakers that ceded their time acknowledge that they have ceded their time. And so we don't have anything on the record that looks like we deprived anyone of a right to speak. So, um.
Yeah, and that's elsewhere in here, so that's.
Our practice, our practice is to have, and and the example that the Vice Mayor gave. Where we do have the neighborhood representative speaking, he or she, we always have them read the names.
And and in our current situation, the city clerk has asked each person who was ceding time to so state for the record. It's just the the differentiation for land use that was puzzling to me.
And and I really have no, I, that's why I'm thinking, I don't know if this happened when I was gone. I I don't.
Do you want to take that one off or put your name next to it?
Yeah, I will. I already have checked, so.
Awesome. Councilmember Weinberg.
Um, I propose that we amend the maximum time to someone to speak from ten minutes to three minutes. I mean, I'm I'm really bothered by the whole idea of seating time. What we're seeing is that um. Residents who are more familiar with the process gain an advantage over those who are not. Uh, I don't think that that's really in the spirit of of how cities should be governed. Um, generally, when time is ceded, we see that people have coordinated with others, even people. Well, we we we've seen very specific coordination so that someone gets. An extra amount of time as opposed to someone who may have a real concern about an issue. And want to speak their mind, but may not have the institutional knowledge of how to get as much time as someone who's presenting a contrary view. It just doesn't seem fair to me.
So Councilmember, what Weinberg, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're proposing. So are you saying? That we should get rid of the maximum ten minutes, meaning it can be more than ten minutes?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the maximum should be three minutes. So if speakers are given three minutes, then there's no point to seat. If speakers are only given a minute, they can have time ceded up to three minutes. But I think that that that's more than enough. When someone speaks for ten minutes, I think they're really getting a tremendous advantage. Over other members of the public. It does not seem fair. Doesn't seem transparent.
Okay. So Councilmember Weinberg is proposing that we change where it says to a maximum of ten minutes to a maximum of three minutes. When members of the public cede their time to one speaker. Um, Councilmember Li Eng.
Yeah, I can raise my hand now.
I see that.
Thank you, but I still don't have video. So I don't agree with that, and let me explain why. Because um a presenter on a land use item can speak up to ten minutes. And so the residents who sometimes, like, one time we had a group of. Six to eight people who ceded their time to one speaker. That maximum person got to speak for ten minutes. If those eight people had spoken their three minutes each, they would have exceeded that ten minutes by far. And sometimes it's more timely to have a neighborhood representative speak. So I think it's only fair that a neighborhood that's being impacted by a development. Have an equal amount of time to speak. So I just think it's only um. We we should just take out that sentence that says seating of time will not be allowed during land use hearings. But we should still allow people to cede their time. And also, some people feel that they're not comfortable speaking. And they would like that person to, that neighborhood representative, to articulate what their points are in addition. So um, I just wanted to share that perspective and want to keep it. But just to remove that um sentence in that um second paragraph of B.
Thanks, Councilmember Li Eng. Councilmember Meadows.
Um, I think this topic, this topic uh might be worth more discussion than we're going to give it in the norms. Uh, I I've heard good points on, you know, of all the council members they've made about this. I do think ten minutes is excessive. I think the seating process takes even more time, so we end up spending. Uh, quite a bit of time. Um, but there's validity to, well, some residents might not want to speak and might want to be willing. So. Um, we should be consistent. We should look at seating allowed. If it's allowed, it should be allowed for all council. Um, agenda items. And how should that be? Is it a five-minute? Is it ten minutes or whatever? But um, I I do see that it has, seems to have been misused. Or abused in some cases, and it's very time-consuming. So I think we should have a separate discussion on it, or maybe Ms. Houston can suggest a better way to do it. Figure out why it says these things, that why the norms say these, why we're doing this and how we can do it better and more consistently and transparently.
Thanks, Councilmember Meadows. I will just add um that I think that additional time that you're describing. Um, directly relates to our Zoom meetings, because when we have in-person meetings, they actually just write the names on the card. Or they submit all the cards with the names and give them to the clerk. So that's how we did it in person. So there was no need for the person to get to the mic and then give all the names. But because of Zoom and the the adjustments we had to make, that's what, that's the solution the city clerk came up with, which works for Zoom. Um, you know, I I I have a, I also have a change on eleven point six. And that is to section B where I I want to delete. If there are ten or fewer requests to speak on an agenda item, the limit for each speaker will be three minutes. The automatic nature of that, going back to the length of meetings. This really ties the mayor's hand and it can extend the time for meetings where there's no flexibility on reducing that time. We've also had meetings where members of the public take advantage of this. They wait until we call the three minutes and then hands start popping up. Um, this has been happening for years. And and so my suggested edits to eleven point six B is for the wording to be, the limit for speakers will be one to three minutes. Depending on the number of speakers and the number of items, the council needs to discuss at that meeting. It would give the mayor that discretion um to determine how much time to assign for that item. But I think having those two things written saying it will depend on the number of items to be discussed that night and the number of speakers. Then he or she will have that discretion and ability to set the time. The automatic nature of three minutes, if it's ten or less, really causes issues. So that's one change. I do not want us to delay. Um, I don't know how folks feel about that proposal. So both my suggestion and Councilmember Weinberg's suggestion about the maximum. Getting rid of ten minutes and making it three minutes. Um, we can always bring back when we revise the um norms, because we're going to agendize this. Agendizes for a council meeting. And because we have ten minutes, and I know Ms. Houston is going to start saying we have a closed session. I do want to move us along. So Vice Mayor and Councilmember Li Eng, and I see your hands raised. Go ahead, Councilmember Li Eng.
Yeah, you, I understand um the the amendment you want to make, and I agree with that. But I do have a problem when it becomes a land use hearing. Um, to be be reduced to less than three minutes. Because if it's ten people or less, I still think they should be um given their their um, their respect of having their three minutes. These developments or this impact of what's going to happen regarding land use to the neighbors or the neighborhood around them. Is going to impact them greatly.
And Councilmember Li Eng, you know, based on what we said earlier about moving meetings along. That point is taken. As I said, we're going to discuss it right now. It's just proposed language, your point that you're making. You will have another opportunity to make, nobody's agreeing to the three minutes. So we're just putting it there as a placeholder, just so we can move forward with the rest of the norms, so we can bring it back at a regular city council meeting. Um, so moving right along, I think we're up to section eleven point seven. Any comments or changes to eleven point seven? Seeing no hands, eleven point eight. Councilmember Weinberg.
Uh, I think the language on motions to reconsider are really kind of a mess. I think we can simplify it and just say a motion to reconsider may only be brought by a council member who was in the mic. Yeah, who who was in the majority voting against the prior motion. But everything in there about time periods and members of the public, it's. But everything in there about time periods and members of the public, it's, it. I think it's very confusing and doesn't make sense.
Vice Mayor.
I'll drop this in the city attorney's lap, but I think you have to make it just a different. And be ambiguous unless.
Mayor, you're jumping ahead. You're jumping ahead. Councilmember Weinberg was commenting on 11.7.
And no, I thought he was talking about 11.8 request for reconsideration.
You're not, you're not responding to his. You're just, you're adding your own comment.
I'm adding my own comment to 11.8 because I believe he was talking about 11.8.
Right, 11.81.
Yes.
One, right.
I'm not commenting on what he said, other than my first comment, which was, I think that you have to have. A1 and A2 separate for legal reasons. But with respect to number two, A2, I have an additional comment, which is. Saying it has to be done 24 hours in advance of the posting of the agenda. May be ambiguous unless we have a fixed schedule for posting the agenda, which needs to be verified. That's my only comment.
Got it. Any concerns, objections to the suggestions by both Councilmember Weinberg and Vice Mayor Ian Under? Okay, Councilmember Weinberg, wait, let's go to Ms. Houston. Ms. Houston?
The reason why these rules seem to be so convoluted. Is because under the old rules and the old Rosenberg rule, where you could reconsider if you were on the majority side, the prevailing side. At the meeting or the very next meeting. Cause Brown Act violations. And so you have to figure out if it's made at the very next meeting, then what happens? Then that's just the motion to reconsider and then it's agendized for a future meeting. So I know we've really struggled with these requests for reconsideration. And I know that I believe it was the city of Santa Clara got sued on a reconsideration motion when. It didn't, it deprived the public of an opportunity to be able to comment on the item. So I I, one thing that we could do is, I know there was a comment about. The timing, we could clarify the timing better, but. I I mean, I can go back and look through this and see if it could get streamlined. I know Megan Satterley. Worked on this at one point way back when and. It is, it is, it is a very, I would say, clunky process, but we're trying to abide by the Brown Act.
Yeah, and I think B2 has the Brown Act element to it, Julie, that I'm not sure is conforming right now to current law.
So. I can't make a motion to reconsider at 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 this upcoming meeting from something we looked at at the last meeting. I would have to wait until 24 hours before the agenda is posted for the August 24th meeting. To have us thinking about, to have us reconsider a motion.
So this. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Weinberg. I know, and so does the city attorney, that some of this is required. Like this is very procedural from the Brown Act. So let us take this back and figure out what we came up with on our own as La Soto City Council versus what is Brown Act require. Okay, so then I'm going to keep us going to 11.9. Okay, see no hands, going to 11.10. Okay, and then section 12 on closed sessions, any comments or changes to section 12? Okay, seeing no hands, I'm going to section 13. Vice Mayor.
Just one quick question on 12.8B, boy. The last sentence in B, except for the action taken and the vote, all closed session discussions will remain confidential. Does that mean that the, and maybe vote could be expanded to indicate whether it is the numerical vote. Or the disposition of a motion, does it, something passed or something failed? Or do we always report out the exact vote?
City Attorney.
There is a vote taken in the closed session. The Brown Act requires that it be a three, two, who voted? The three who voted in the no. So, and that's only for action taken, not a vote taken.
And is it, and is it reported as what the total vote was, or is it reported as to who voted how?
It's it's voted total vote and who voted on which side, so.
It seems to me that that could be clarified in 12B, 12.8B.
12.8B, okay.
And that's, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Weinberg.
I have another proposal for 12.8, and I think it accomplishes what the Vice Mayor wants to accomplish. I I think A and B are both very wordy. I would eliminate them altogether and replace it with the sentence. The mayor shall report to the public on the closed session in accordance with Ralph M. Brown Act.
I would prefer it to be more because in the interest of transparency, I'd like the public to know more of what's required here. Because closed sessions are enough of a mystery.
And let's do a consensus check. I agree with the Vice Mayor that. So Councilmember Weinberg, I will take that task with the city attorney to see if we can make it less wordy. But I do think we should explain more to the public about how closed session votes work. So. Councilmember Meadows, Councilmember Lee Eng, any quick thoughts here? Based on Councilmember Weinberg's suggestion and the Vice Mayor's suggestion?
Yes, I think if we can clear, Mayor, if we can clarify the wording better. But I do think demystifying would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that closed session is already. People think of it as actions taken behind closed doors, so I do not want to simplify it too much. And the more explanation and clarity we can provide in this area is important.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee Eng. So section 13, any changes? Discussion on section 13. Seeing no hands raised. Then our last section is section 14, violations of procedures. Any changes or discussion on section 14, seeing no hands raised? We did it, but I want to explain the next steps. We've had two study sessions on our norms and procedures. I think we've had a good discussion. The plan was to then bring this back to a regular agendized item. Which would reflect the red lines tonight and then consider if we wanted to add anything else. I want to check with council members to see if they think one more study session. Is necessary before we bring this back to our regular council meeting. So I'm looking for hands. Councilmember Weinberg.
We didn't go over suggested additions to the norms.
Right. And so that's part of the the question right now. Is it better for us to then do a third study session? And this is important stuff. So if we need a third study session, we should do it. So Councilmember Weinberg, is that a vote for a next, a third study session before we agendize it for a regular meeting?
Is there, is there, I mean, I I have a few things, but I don't think they're going to take a lot of time. More time, I think I want to spend right now because we have something else to do. Is there any way to discuss these other than a study session?
No, we could do it as a long regular city council meeting item. But it's actually better for this kind of discussion to be in a study session. So let's plan, so I have Councilmember Weinberg, any, but Councilmember Lee Eng.
I support another study session before we bring it back for a council.
I see thumbs up from the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Meadows, thumbs up. So we will do one more study session. And before we put it on the regular agenda, Mr. Kildare.
Just confirming, do you want to give direction to staff on the length now? Because that does help us with the scheduling.
To be safe, let's schedule an hour and a half instead of an hour.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We will adjourn our study session at 5:33 PM. And we will move, let's start our closed session in two minutes at 5:35. Thank, have the, do we have the link?
Yes.
Okay. Who sent?
Well, let me ask it this way. Does anyone not have the link?
I have no idea till I go look.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
It was sent out. It was sent out by.